Good morning. And welcome to our members of the public who have joined us. We welcome you to the Public Hearing Meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, May 23, 2023. And please note that Supervisor Mitchell will be absent from our meeting today. The Chief Executive Officer, our County Council, our Executive Office, and our Sergeant at Arms are all here to assist. And we will begin this meeting, like we do every meeting, with our county's land acknowledgement.
The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, the Totavium, Surrano, Kish, and Tumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Totavium Band of Mission Indians, the Gabriolino-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, the Gabriolino-Tongva-San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, the Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians, Kish Nation, the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians.
Executive Officer, now please call the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will begin on Page 2, Public Hearings Number 1 through 16. On Item 7, the Director of Public Works requests that this item be taken off calendar. On Item 9, Supervisor Solis requests that this item be continued to June 13. All remaining items will be held for hearing. On Page 9, notices of closed session. On Item CS1, the Chief Executive Officer requests that this item be taken off calendar. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair. The requests to take items off calendar and continue are before you.
Okay, that will be moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item, and that will be the order. Executive Officer, please now play the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Before we begin with our public hearing items, Executive Officer, please... Did I... Do we just do that? Oh, please read in the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules.
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-692-8955 and use participant code number 4433663. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have the opportunity to address the board throughout the meeting. You will receive up to one minute to address the board on each of the public hearing items and one minute to comment on general public comment. For members of the public joining us remotely, when the board moves to the item you wish to address, promptly press 1 then 0 to be entered into the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. You will need to press 1 then 0 for each item on which you would like to speak. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so. We will begin by calling in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
You have such a great voice. Just gonna say that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I keep thinking I'm gonna hear... Please keep your arms and hands inside the... Right, no. Okay, this is serious. Executive Officer, please swear in the members of the public who are requesting to address the board on the public item... Public hearing items.
Please stand and raise your right hand. In the testimony you may give before this board, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay, everybody duly sworn in. We're gonna begin with Item Number 1. And for members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 1 is a hearing on the Sewer Service Charge Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2023-24 for the Consolidated Sewer Maintenance District and the Marina Sewer Maintenance District. A departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
And now we have Mark Pastrulla, Director, and we have Kobe Sky, Deputy Director, Department of Public Works, are here and available for questions. Are there any supervisors that would like to make remarks on Item 1? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
With the following individual, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Donald Harlan. Moderator, when we have the first speaker, please.
Thank you. Our first participant is from Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you. And Supervisor Han, you also have a terrific voice. I just wanna get that squared away, but let's...
Oh, well, thank you.
No fraternizing with the... We all have a very nice voice, I will say. Let's move forward. This is the sewage one, so it's a little drier than the others. I was very interested, and I have a great proposal, but this does address the sewage in the marina. And the marina is home to beaches and harbors. I just wanna introduce, as we talk about this item, that the marina is down there, and they have a great budget. But we also have a little jack-up-the-rates coming up on the lifeguard one, if I can stay on the phone that long, because it's down the road. I have an idea to get beaches and harbors to help out, to subsidize these young lifeguards, because I'll tell you something, I love lifeguards, and I do not want them to face, you know, upcharges, to get into one of the best programs in America. This is the great pride. And I understand Mr. Maroni is trying to hold the line, we've got a big...
I know, you're... So I hear you, because I love what you're saying, because I agree with you, but you gotta stick on this Item 1 and not get to the lifeguards.
We gotta get off... We gotta get back... I'm gonna have to pull myself off this item, because I went right off. I apologize. I'm out.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Are there any in-person?
No in-person speakers.
Okay, so now it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 1 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 1 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
Okay, we're now gonna move on to Item 2. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Item 2, Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 2 is a hearing on the Annual Garbage Collection and Disposal Service Fee Report for Fiscal Year 2023-24. Departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Okay. Are there any supervisors that would like to make remarks on Item 2? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, Item 2.
Will Donald Harlan, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please? Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Do we... Did we lose the moderator, or did we lose the person on the phone?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. And then do we have... Donald Harlan is not in the... Oh, okay. Okay, so seeing no other people willing to speak on this item, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 2 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 2 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
Okay, we're now gonna move on to Item 3. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read the short title.
Item 3 is a hearing on the Annual Solid Waste Generation Service Charge Report for Fiscal Year 2023-24. Departmental statement was provided and no correspondence was received.
Are there any supervisors that would like to make remarks? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, Item 3.
Will Donald Harlan, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay. And Donald Harlan, don't... Okay. Seeing no other comments on our solid waste, is now appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 3 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by myself. To approve this item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 3 is now before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Item 4. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 4 is a hearing on adoption of a resolution amending the county's Waterworks Districts and Marina Del Rey's Water Systems Water Shortage Contingency Plan. No departmental statement was provided and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Supervisors, or anybody want to make comments on Item 4? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, Item 4.
Will Donald Harlan, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Okay, thank you very much. And I was starting to feel like nobody wanted to come to your birthday party, so I had to jump in.
I know, thank you.
I do care a great deal about... Yeah, I mean, it's very lonely down there today. I don't understand, because these are such exciting items, in a way. Well, I mean, they are a little dry, and you could mix it up and, you know, equitably maybe have a little less closed session, a little more, you know, like when it's vibrant on the other Tuesdays. But this, I think, I think we're gonna have no problem making the lunch appointments today, let me put it that way, okay? But this is critical, because droughts are predicted to become more frequent, longer, and more severe, obviously, as the climate fiasco progresses. It's good news about Colorado, as we saw yesterday, but as we aim for the end of this comment, I just wanna remind everyone how wonderful the marina is and what a cha-ching cash register it is, and how easy it would be for them to plunk into the fire department who have a serious structural problem. I'm not gonna... I don't want Mr. Maroni to feel like everything is okay, no need to get money back, but with these kids, these lifeguards, these are the kids who are...
Oh, you can't talk about the lifeguards on Item 4. Again, I agree with what you're saying, but...
Well, you can, because they drink. They do drink. They do drink water, Supervisor Han.
That's a stretch, but thank you, Eric. Thank you. Thank you.
It is a stretch, but it's the best comment.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. They drink water.
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, then it would be appro... Is there anybody in person? No? Okay. Then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing on this item and vote. Item 4 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
On Item 4, Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
Okay, we'll now move on to Item 5. For members of the public on the telephone, please plus... Press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title for Item 5.
Item 5 is a hearing on adoption of a resolution approving the Los Angeles County Revised Countywide Siding Element. No departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Are there any supervisors that would like to make comments on Item 5? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public that signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers who have signed up for this item. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 5 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 5 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to Item 6. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item, Item 6. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 6 is a hearing on an ordinance for adoption granting a proprietary petroleum pipeline franchise to Matrix Pipeline LP to collect, transport, and distribute petroleum and other petroleum products for a period of five years, beginning on May 25, 2023, and expiring on May 24, 2028. No departmental statement was provided and no correspondence was received.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm gonna make a few comments on this item. Anytime a pipeline franchise comes up, I have a keen interest in it, something I've focused on for a long time, even when I was in Congress, about our petroleum pipelines running beneath our cities throughout the county. And back in 2017, I expressed concerns regarding the safety of pipelines carrying hazardous materials based on an idle pipeline leak that occurred in my community of Wilmington. So as a result, this board instructed our CEO to work with any relevant departments, including Public Works, on pipeline safety provisions to be included in future franchise ordinances. So this resulted in requiring that all new franchise agreements to include language on safety inspection and testing requirements. So Director Pastrulla, can you tell us what language was included in this agreement with Matrix Pipeline to ensure safety in the transportation of materials?
Thank you, Supervisor Han, Chair Han, for the time today and to be able to answer the questions. One reminder for the board is that each time we do a franchise agreement with one of these pipeline companies, we're doing a separate ordinance, so this might have been confusing to see that we're actually doing an ordinance, new law within county code, specifically negotiated with the specific franchisee. This is the first one you're seeing, or at least one of the first you're seeing, where we've made changes to those ordinances, and therefore your question. What's different about this ordinance is we've included a safety requirement, safety inspections, that would verify the integrity of the pipelines themselves. This is in compliance, and these testing must show that they're in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local pipeline laws. Including inactive pipelines are defined, again, and that's for inactive pipelines. So this is where we have the most concern, is that these pipelines that are inactive could become a hazardous condition for the community. And so those inspections will guarantee for us that the inspections are being made, and where these inspection reports come into our offices on a one-year frequency, and we notice any discrepancies with them, our Office of Oil and Gas will be following through with Calgem to essentially turn the franchisee into the... to Calgem for further application of the law. The other thing, of course, is that we've added that they comply with all laws. And as you know, this has been one of the problems, because as these companies are abandoning those lines and selling to smaller companies, we really don't know about them until they come in and want them, make them active again. And so we do get to know about them as they apply, but I do wanna remind the board that there are a number of lines that we currently, you know, don't have a good fix on where they are and what they are. And we're working to improve that, and I'll talk about that in a second, when you... And one of your questions, and you're gonna ask me, what more can we be... can be done?
You already know my question?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Staff, you let him know what I was gonna ask?
Well, I have an idea what you're gonna ask, anyway.
Thank you for that, and I know, it's the inactive, or even idle, pipelines, which there actually was no real terminology for idle, and yet that's what they were calling it. And they... If it's inactive, it has to be, you know, drained, capped on both ends, and still inspected, so that it's not leaking. And that's what happened in Wilmington. It was a so-called idle, and I even wanted a third-party agency to verify, because it was up to the pipeline operators that just said, "Oh, yeah, we've done all that." And in fact, sometimes they haven't. So I appreciate the fact that you're aware of it. And I do understand that we have limited authority on regulations since the transportation of petroleum products is regulated by Calgem, which is the state agency. But what else can we do as a county to pay attention, prevent a leak or hazardous material into our communities? Because we deal, I know Supervisor Solis deals a lot in her communities with, you know, bad things that happen, because there wasn't great oversight, or, you know, regulatory, you know, enforcement on things that ultimately, then years later, you know, your communities suffer from. So what else can we do, even though we don't have direct authority over it, to prevent possible hazardous leak in one of these? Since we're giving them the franchise, right? We're allowing them to...
Right.
...to operate and transport these materials.
And also a reminder that the other jurisdictions in LA County, all 88 cities, have their own process for franchising this as well. And a reminder, this is within our street right-of-way that we're talking about. These franchises occur under our street right-of-way. We currently have 53 of these franchises, to give you some order of magnitude. What the board has already done is credited the Office of Oil and Gas, which was really a good move. What the Oil and Gas Group is doing, that's located within Public Works, is first start establishing accountability for Calgem. So we've been in their ear, so to speak, in establishing relationships with them, confirming what data they have about the oil and gas and wells in LA County. what data they have about the oil and gas and wells in LA County. We're currently mapping, if you remember, the abandoned oil wells in LA County in conjunction with Calgem, which is a good start. I would propose Supervisor that we start the similar, a similar activity of updating our mapping of not only the wells, but of the pipelines. We, we feel we have pretty strong mapping of it, but I think across the community, we, we would guess that it isn't as good as it should be. So one of the things that I proposed today is that we enact a collaborative across LA County, but specifically within a cooperated area, update the mapping of these lines, so we're aware where they, where they are, and coordinate that, of course, with Calgem, so that in the, in the incidents that we have a problem, we can, we're all speaking about the same thing. This has been one of the major problems, is which line is it? These mystery lines. We've also developed criteria and conducted site inspections of priority idle and abandoned wells, as you know. We've coordinated with Calgem, I said, on prioritization of idle and orphaned wells, talked about that. We implemented the recently approved ordinance that prohibits new oil wells and production facilities and designates existing ones as non-conforming to use. And we've implemented a pilot program for continuous air monitoring around priority oil and gas operations within 500 feet of sensitive receptors. We report on potential policies and programs, including funding sources to better protect the health and safety communities close to proximity. This is one of the issues, of course, is as you stand up, these resources, they do need to be funded. And we're, we're constantly looking for ways to, we could do more if we had more money, that's always the case, in, in, including the oil wells, but also including these lines.
Why don't, why doesn't the franchise agreement include that?
It, it does allow for us to administer, and, and there is a piece of it that is going to administration, to ministering that...
But when you negotiate it, could you add more money that would go towards pipeline safety?
Introduce yourself.
Or is that not allowed?
Yeah, my name is Greg Even. I'm with Department of Public Works, the Survey Mapping and Property Management Division. So we have increased the fees, actually, the fees for this particular franchise is going up 40%. But the fees are, for most of these franchises, are relatively small compared to the efforts that we would, that we're moving forward. So some of the, the larger franchisees that generate...
But could you, could you raise the fees? Is that a negotiable thing? Is that where that happens?
We, we have raised the fees, but for proprietary franchises, they're based on cubic, money per cubic foot or...
Right. Pretty sure these oil companies are making a lot of money.
Supervisor, we're limited in the, based on the size...
That's what I was, that's what I'm asking. Is it lawful to raise the fees to go more towards pipeline safety?
Right now, because the fees are based on the size of the pipe, there's a limiting factor.
Okay, I see Supervisor Solis, you're on the queue.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so is third, third-party investigators involved in this to, to make sure that we're actually, you know, meeting, meeting our standards? Is that what's happening right now, or no?
Yes. One of the provisions in the current franchise ordinance is that they have third-party verification for inactive and idle pipelines.
And do they, do they pick them, or is that maybe something we can negotiate, so we really know that they're third-party and they're not just someone, it's like, you know, well, that's our doctor there and go see them, and, you know, we know that happens in other systems. And I would just wanna see that there's a clear line there.
Is there verification of third-party?
We currently don't have, I mean, we asked them to, to hire a third-party to do these inspections. In this case, this Matrix does not have any idle pipelines, but for those that do, they're required to get a third-party to, to verify that they don't have any, or that their idle pipelines are being inspected.
Supervisor, I think that's a good improvement, as you're bringing it. What we're doing is referring these reports to the Oil and Gas, the Office of Oil and Gas at Public Works. Greg currently works in our mapping group, and we have a second group that's the Oil and Gas Group. So we're making the referral to them. And one of the things we'll look for is verification of third-party. It's a good, good provision that we can easily put in there, so it's one of the check-offs.
Right.
And the other, as I said, is to make sure that they're complying with the investigation requirements and safety requirements.
Right.
And then coordinating that, of course, with Calgem. So that's sort of the, currently how we're holding them accountable. It isn't as strong as if we had our own enforcement entity right here locally, but Calgem owns that authority. And that, that's kind of the limiting factor in terms of your control, in terms of inspection.
You need a third-party to verify the third-party?
Yeah.
And just a last question about the cities, because sometimes they get ahead of us, right? And they're not fully informing our constituents, because we overlap in many ways. So what, what can we do better to improve that?
Yeah, so coordination in our, across this county with our, in our infrastructure has been, you know, one of the goals, my goals as a director for a long time, and I think our effort on infrastructure LA says a lot about that. And so I think this is just another one of those areas, Supervisor, that we need to add into that collaborative effort. And the county can act as a facilitator. We can do that presently, to like, for instance, even the mapping portion I talked about, starting to map up and start to coordinate with cities. Of course, one of the issues is that my staff reminds me is that, one, the owners of these pipelines turn over frequently, and then we also have the city staff who turn over. So it is a good role, I think, for the county's Office of Oil and Gas to play as facilitator for our county, about where these lines are, who's doing what, like, check best practices across the county. Now, I know we've been working with the city of LA, and we've had really good coordination with them, so I'm very confident about that coordination. But I think the smaller cities, we do need to reach out to them and see, see what their practices are.
Like in my district, we have Montebello, and we have an incorporated area, we have a lot of these wells.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
I mean, again, I think the fact that we now have an oil and gas department, it was a great move on our part, colleagues, that, that we created that. It's interesting, though, talking about, you know, inactive lines. I mean, you think Matrix has no inactive lines, and, and, you know, one of the requirements in these franchise agreements is that once, within one year of the operative date of this ordinance, the company must prepare and submit to Public Works procedures and a schedule of conducting routine and, as needed, safety inspections and integrity testing of the franchisees' inactive pipelines.
Correct.
So how do we know Matrix has no inactive pipelines?
Well, they've currently purported, they, they only have 375, 3,750 feet of four-inch pipeline in Workman Well Road, and that's the scope of their facilities. They report that annually, and we look at those reports, but again, we don't have any authority to go and, and verify their operations. That's Calgem's responsibility.
So Cal...
So Calgem has that third-party verification of an inactive idle or abandoned line.
It's a good question, Supervisors, like, where are all the inactive lines in LA County?
Yeah, I know.
That's the question you're asking.
Right.
And that's something that we really gotta come back to you with from Calgem, understanding what they know.
They're the ones that can really cause problems.
So it's because we're relying on these companies to attest to what...
Yeah, right, to say, but anyway, okay, well, I do feel like these are much stronger franchise agreements than we had in the past. I think, I appreciate Public Works really including all that language in this agreement, and then obviously, it's the follow-up, and it's the looking at their reporting that they give to you and making sure that it's, it is what it says it is.
That's right.
So thank you very much for that. Supervisor Solis, do you have anything else you wanna say? Okay. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who signed up to speak on this item, item six.
Madam Chair, no in-persons have signed up for this item. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Lonely, it's lonely out here, but yes. Appreciate the conversation, and I think that, whereas I heard a lot of, we're limited, it's, we're limited, we've increased them by 40%. I thought the answer was actually, no, there's no limit to what you can charge a franchisee. And as a member of the public, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, having been assaulted by dramatic increases when everybody, including the president and the governor, were bellyaching about why are they making record profits while the people are struggling at over $5 a gallon? You know, I don't feel like we need to tippy-toe around these bastards who leave a mess wherever they go and are completely unreliable. You can ask the great humanitarian Mark Ridley Thomas, and where the hell is Mitchell, who literally had to put together a community service district in his neighborhood, and Freeport McMoran and all the pack of thieves were funding all sorts of sneaky behavior. My recommendation is, let's put a table together to figure out how to jack the rates up on these, these, these oil companies, oil and gas. Remember, our enemy on Monday, on Tuesday, there are BFFs, but on Wednesday, they're our enemy again. So thank you for your interest in county government.
Thank you, thank you, Eric. Are there any other members?
No other speakers, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, there are no other additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item six is now before us, all move, seconded by Supervisor Solis, to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item six is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, four to zero.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to item eight. And for members of the public on the telephone, plus, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title for item eight.
Item eight is a hearing on an ordinance for adoption amending county code Title V personnel relating to medical standards for employment. No departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Okay, and I do know we have Dr. Suarez, Senior Manager, and Maggie Martinez, Assistant Director at the Department of Human Resources, are available for questions. Any supervisors wanna make a comment on this? Okay, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who signed up to speak on item eight.
Will Destiny Rosales please come forward and staff will assist you? Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, anyone in, in person? No, seeing none? Okay, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item eight is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Horvath, to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item eight is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, four to zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10, Hearing on the Natural History Museum, La Brea Tar Pits and the George C. Page Museum Fee Increases. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 10 is a hearing on adoption of a resolution increasing the regular admission fee at the Natural History Museum, La Brea Tar Pits, and George C. Page Museum for adults from $15 to $18, and admission fee for senior students and youth ages 13 to 17 from $12 to $14, effective July 1st, 2023. No departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Okay, thank you. I see Supervisors on the queue. I have Supervisor Solis, Supervisor Barker, and then Supervisor Horvath in that order. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna thank you for recognizing me, but I do wanna state that the arts and culture, as we've discussed on this board, plays a very important role in our economic and social resiliency. And we know that the arts area, the segment, has been impacted heavily by the COVID pandemic, and we are still kind of reeling through that, getting out of it. I know that we also declared, this board declared April of this year as Arts Month, and we recognize the cultural inclusion and the critical overall health and well-being of our families that, that art provides. I think that's really important. But we know, again, that we've been hit hard by COVID. Many of the folks that would typically go to visit our facilities, our museums, weren't able to. Many of our students weren't. We had, you know, relaxed, many, many provisions, but at the time, people just were not able to come out. So we're recovering, and I can see that you are having to do what you need to do to raise some of the fees, and I appreciate that. But I don't think it's a sustainable model for you moving forward, because you offer so many things and the demands are very high. I often ask of, of our, of our department, what are they doing in our districts? And the response is, well, there's not enough funding to get out there. And with COVID, there was even fewer, I think, ability for even the mobile, your big mobile units that you take out were, were not seen. I hope we can get back to that, but I realize that the funding mechanism is not really in place to allow you to do that. So I would hope that we could work with our CEO and with our other talented individuals, Arts Commission, I know they don't have a lot of money, but coming up with ideas of how to do more fundraising. And I know that you all have been doing that this past cycle, in fact. I know you really put forward a, a plan to get more funding in. But I don't think, again, it's sustainable for what we want to offer, because we're county, and this is, I mean, so far-reaching. To go all the way out to parts of my district, in Pomona, and as far as, you know, just all around, is very hard for people to even get on the bus or metro to come out, and even with limited times, if schoolchildren can just come from three to five, free, it's hard for them. If they're coming from La Puente or Sela, or if they're coming from Pomona, it's not worth the trip. They'll never make it. So I'm wondering what kinds of things we might be able to look at, and would hope, maybe there's a, maybe there's a response there to the, from the director that she might wanna, wanna look.
And, and thank you. I did, I was remiss in not introducing our President and Director, Dr. Lori Bettison-Varga. Also with us is Lesley Negredo, the Chief Financial Officer of our Museum of Natural History. So, welcome.
Any thoughts on a plan for how we build a better structure so we have more sustainable funding for the museum?
Yes, thank you, Supervisors and Chair Han. We have really been working hard to enhance our outreach programs, and that has really ramped up again since we reopened, as you know, we were closed for a year from COVID. But we are increasing our fundraising, getting back to our fundraising rates. We're doing a lot of work with external fundraising. So in fact, we've had two significant grants from the state. We will have a third mobile museum online in the fall, and that program is coming back up. All of these things that we're doing with community partners, all of these have been growing, and our staff have lots of aspirations to do these things. So we have to continue to increase our fundraising. This proposal only, it, it closes the gap. It doesn't make it up completely, because we don't wanna transfer all of that burden to the paying visitors.
Could you give us the amount of the, the, you know, the amount of the grants? What number is that?
So, for example, for the outdoor equity grant, that's about a $600,000 grant that we have from the state of California. For the new mobile museum, the initial operating will be covered by a state of California proposal. It's, a grant was about, I think, a half a million. So we're very, and in fact, we just received a, a $3 million grant from the National Science Foundation for our post-baccalaureate internship program to encourage underserved students who get their bachelor's degrees in sciences to continue on in the sciences. And we are one of 12 in the country, so we're really working hard to get external funds as well.
Right, great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Barker?
Thank you, and first of all, it's good to see you. And I have to commend you, because if you, if the public has not been to the museum lately, you all have done an incredible job with a lot of the new facility that's in place. So I know that that's also brought people to the museum. And when I looked at the cost for other museums, even with the increase, we are in line...
Right.
...as it relates to how much we're charging. But what I found out is that we have access for programs that are free, and for individuals, and nearly half of all attendees don't pay anything to come to these programs. So we are still addressing access for those that otherwise wouldn't be able to experience the museum. And so I think that's important to note. While we are increasing, we are not decreasing access for, especially students that want to come and experience the, the museum. And I think that is important for you to highlight, because when people hear, and I know the news was reporting over the weekend that we're increasing our fees, but there that we're increasing our fees, but there was nothing about the fact that we are still opening the doors to those that can't afford to experience it. And I know that it's going to increase a little bit of revenue, and I know Supervisor Solis touched on that. And it's saying an estimated $1.1 million, and that's what you're going to invest back into the community. And I assume that's when you talk about the moving museums. So I think that's also important to note, that while we are increasing the fee, we are also increasing access also in the community for individuals. So I really, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I really appreciate the work that you all do. Because that museum really has come a long way from when I started with the county. And it's more than just dinosaurs now, although that is important. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Barger. But again, I'm glad you highlighted all that, but a good point that Supervisor Solis made was, of course, even that free access for students in the afternoon, students in her district would never make it there. So looking forward to figuring that piece out and the mobile unit coming online. I think that's going to benefit your students. You can take it to her district first. We've talked about it. And then mine. Okay, Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am supportive of this item to invest in our award-winning facilities and leadership. Thank you very much for your great stewardship of all of these facilities. Ensuring the long-term financial viability of these institutions is critically important. Recently, we know the facilities have had structural deficits because programming and personnel costs have been rising faster than the revenues. And to balance the museum budget, the county pledged $1 million in additional funding last year. We'll provide another $1.2 million this year. These contributions have helped to address the financial deficits, but other adjustments are also needed. And so I know that's why this item is before us today. So in order to support the ongoing financial health of these important cultural landmarks, I think it's reasonable to raise admission rates for the first time in six years while still remaining below the prices of other similar attractions throughout the county, providing, as you've heard, many groups, including our schoolchildren, teachers, military veterans, and others with continued free admission. And excited to hear about the mobile program that will make these facilities even more accessible to all of the people who will enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, no in-person speakers that have signed up for this item. Moderator, when we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Yeah, unfortunately, I got distracted. So which item is this?
This is the raising the fees on the Natural History Museum, item 10. Not the lifeguard yet.
I appreciate that for the headline. Okay. So I'm a big fan of the Natural History Museum. And they do have a $1 million structural ta-ching that they get out of the county budget every year, thanks to the great work of Volperre, the lawyer, and all the great thieves up in county council. But the idea of raising the fees on the students and the children and the kids and the people, the idea of charging any money for access to this museum is completely anathema to me. Look at the state across the street where it's free, and look at what George Lucas and Melody Hobson are going to do with the urging of the supervisors, including MRT from the sidelines and Mayor Garcetti from India. For all the bending over backwards we did for these billionaires, they're going to make that accessible to the humans in our community for free as well. They can sell them a Star Wars tchotchke and a hot dog, but we're not going to be paying
Oh, your time is up.
$20 to go to a museum.
So engaged in what you were saying, but your time has expired.
Well, it's an outrage.
Are there other speakers? What's on the phone?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, and no more, none in person? Okay, so it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 10 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Solis and seconded by Supervisor Horvath. To approve the item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
For item 10, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, four to zero.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the Junior Lifeguard Program Fee Increase. Eric Previn, are you listening? We're now on item 11, the Junior Lifeguard Program. And for members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 11 is a hearing on adoption of a resolution to increase the district's Junior Lifeguard Program fees for 2023 from $585 to $635. No departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Okay, we have our Fire Chief, Tony Maroni, is here. Adam Uhara, our Assistant Chief, is also here and available for questions. I will make my remarks and then call on my colleagues. I think we all would agree that the Junior Lifeguard Program is an amazing county program. I remember two years ago, when the communities found out that it was going to be postponed again because of COVID, hundreds of constituents reached out to my board office begging us to reinstate. I think it's the most emails I've ever received about a single program. So we managed, in collaboration with the Fire Department and the Department of Public Health, to bring it back in a safe way for the summer. This Junior Lifeguard Program is so important. It trains young people to become lifeguards one day, and it also promotes ocean safety. But I think it's the, sort of, the career path that happens. I think I've never met a lifeguard out there on the beach in a tower who doesn't say they started as a junior guard. It really gives young people an opportunity to see a career in the county that is a very good career, that really can, they can earn good wages, good benefits, raise their family on. It's really a good career. So I believe that it should be accessible to everyone. And one of the things I've really focused on is that, you know, our department needs to expand its reach of this program. So it reaches young people from all of our district. It seemed for many years it really focused just on the beach communities. And we said, make a better effort to get more kids throughout LA County that should also have access to the ocean and a potential career. And I think you've worked on doing that. I am concerned about raising it another $50, after we just raised it $50 last year. And even though we know that there is a scholarship program available, I think a lot of families might be deterred from even applying for this when they see the fee. Because it kind of takes some reading between the lines to understand that there's even a scholarship available, and how do you get that? So if I, as a parent, you know, saw $635 for a summer program, and I, you know, couldn't afford that, I wouldn't even tell my young person that we were even going to apply. So we would never even know that there was a scholarship available. And last year, I voted to support a $50 increase with the understanding that our CEO would find other money to keep this program going. And you did, CEO Davenport, you did find some money. But then, of course, we had negotiations, and we had the COLA increase for our department employees. So that deficit went back up, and here we are. But I'm uncomfortable filling that deficit by targeting families of the young people that we're really reaching out to and hoping to become your workforce someday. It just seems like it's an unfair burden on young people and their families. I think you should try to fill that deficit by tapping into other funds. So I'm going to regretfully vote no on this item. I've not spoken to my colleagues. I don't know where they're at. But I remember last year when I asked you, if you didn't get this, could you survive? And yes, you could survive. You would take from other areas. But it's very much like the museums, right? They're looking to do this to sustain the program. But if you're going to offer scholarships anyway, and I know the foundation has a big part of that, seems to me we should urge the foundation to kind of raise more money to fill this gap anyway. And that's how I feel. Again, I don't know if I have support on my board for that, because I haven't spoken to them. But I see Supervisor Horvath, and I see Supervisor Barger.
Thank you. Do we have statistics on people accessing the assistance program to ensure that it is actually meeting our young people who need it?
Yes, we do have statistics.
Can you tell me a little bit about how we're making sure people are accessing the program?
Yes, so currently, 43% of our participants are young women. 57% are young men. We do have representation from every supervisory district. We have a transportation program with buses that we spend $85,000 a year on to make sure that we bring youth from outside the coastal communities to the beach to participate in the morning session of the Junior Lifeguard Program. I hear Supervisor Han, loud and clear, that we need to do a better job messaging, that no family should not apply based on financial ability to pay, because we've never turned a family away, and we've always utilized the scholarships to pay for those who cannot afford the program.
And the current scholarship program, how are people accessing that? And what is, what sort of, do you have any sort of information about the scholarship program specifically? And how it's helped get people into this work?
Yes, I do have some information. There is a short application that they fill out. I'll defer to Chief Uhara to explain that application process further. But we do set aside money for scholarships. We believe this year, in 2023, we're going to award probably 200-plus scholarships at a cost of approximately $150,000. But I'll turn it over to Chief Uhara for the scholarship process.
Yes, for the scholarship, when they apply online to be a junior lifeguard, and there's, when they put in for the fee, if they can't pay, they apply for the scholarship right there. And then the office reviews the application based on income, and then they'll notify the family that they're qualified, and they'll be awarded the scholarship and will not have to pay.
So the ability to access the scholarship is right part of the application? It's not like on another website or another place that they have to go to access that information?
Yes.
Okay.
We worked with ISD to create a program software recently this year to streamline that.
Okay. Well, I share the chair's concerns about making sure that we, that every young person who wants to be able to access this program can. And I'm glad to hear that the scholarship program is accessible right through the application. So it's easy to find. It's something that they can, you know, access just as they're going through that process. And is there also contact information on the website that in case they have questions about how to access that scholarship program? Okay, so I think we're, you all are trying to do your best in terms of communicating the availability of that program. And we want to make sure it continues to be financially sustainable. So if we can keep track of how people are able to access scholarships, how many people are being served by the scholarships, and if we get any, through that contact information, any questions or concerns or inability to really understand how to access the scholarship program, I'd be interested in knowing that, because I think the chair is absolutely right. We want to make sure that everybody can access it. But I do know that this financial assistance program is provided with up to 90% financial aid provided to families. So it's very vital that people are able to access that information. But knowing that we have to increase fees to cover costs that you have identified, I think, especially given the information that you've shared here and in terms of people's ability to access that scholarship program, I'm inclined to support this item today, especially because we also, as a county, provide transportation from several areas around the county, South LA, Southeast Los Angeles, San Fernando Valley. So I was glad to hear, you know, that there's diverse representation from all of our districts throughout the county in terms of who is accessing this program. We want to continue to make sure that everyone can participate. So we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll certainly track in our office if there are any concerns that are raised as a result of this fee increase or the inability to access the scholarship programs for those who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. But as we found out during COVID, a lot of folks have a very difficult time navigating online applications.
These are junior lifeguards. They know that better than us.
Not if their parents are the ones applying. I have Supervisor Barger and then Supervisor.
Thank you. And following up on Supervisor Horvath's question, I mean, there were a total of 3,600 paid participants in the summer of 2022, and you're estimating 4,000. Just based on the 3,600, how many of those applied for scholarships?
So in 2022, we offered 106 scholarships for a total of $43,000. And just to update your board on the applications for 2023, we're at 4,900, the greatest number ever.
And of those, how many, based on Supervisor Horvath's questions, have applied for the scholarship?
We anticipate that at...
Well, they're signing up, and the scholarship is part of that.
200-plus scholarships will be requested.
So I understand the concerns, but actually, you make a compelling argument, Chair Han, as to why we need to vote for this. Because we have done the COLAs, and we have financial obligations. This is a $3.2 million cost. And there are people that are paying the fees to cover the cost. And then for those that can't, there are scholarships. And I just don't believe that, given the constraints of this board as it relates to all the financial needs of the county, that we can't not move forward with it, because the reality is, this is actual cost recovery, correct? We're not making a profit.
That's correct, Supervisor. This is going to meet the increased operational expenses for the department. And this is a small but necessary increase. It's 8.5% increase in the fee. I look forward to the day when the department closes its books budgetarily with a surplus, so we don't have to go back to our residents to ask for fee increases. But that's certainly not the case right now, as the department continues to face a structural deficit.
But I want to emphasize that this is not a money, we're not making money, this is actual cost recovery.
This is actual increased operational cost recovery. The department does not make any money on this.
Okay, and then fees here. If the board were not to do this in terms of the Fire Department's budget, I mean, this would, what would your recommendation to this board be as it relates to moving this program forward? I mean, do you have the funding to plug that gap ongoing?
Supervisor, our budget is very tight, especially in terms of our ongoing funding. We did provide $1 million as one-time funding. And what we did is, because we didn't have ongoing funding...
Over five years. That one time was over five years.
Exactly. We scheduled it over five years. And so there, as I sit here today, I would not be able to commit to the board that we have $3.2 million in ongoing funding or a subset of that amount to allocate to the department.
And we know this is a popular program, because you estimated 4,000. You're already well exceeding the 4,000.
I would say that the Junior Lifeguard Program is the most popular program that the county fire department offers.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? We wouldn't need the $3.2 million to cover this.
So I said $3.2 million or some subset of that. So if it's $3.2, if it's a million, if it's $500,000, as we are preparing for the final changes budget, our ongoing allocation is very, very tight.
Because I just heard the deficit was just $205,000.
So if the question is, do we have 200, is that 205,000 in ongoing, we would not have that in final changes budget.
But we could find it. Okay, Supervisor Solis?
So my question too to the CEO is, can we come up with what we, you know, matching what we gave this last time, $1.1? And if we spread it over again five years, but to allow for at least some compensation? Because it is a popular program.
Absolutely.
They're doing a good job if they're up to 4,000. And I really worry that the scholarship funds is not even adequate. 200 people out of 4,000, what percentage are not even eligible? So I'm really concerned about that. So I'm just asking the CEO if there's a way to do one-time funding.
So the one-time funding, we will have a better idea in supplemental. Supplemental changes in October when we close the books. But for ongoing funding today, we don't have that in the budget to allocate. And I think, at the end of the day, as we have this and other discussions, the question isn't always whether we can allocate the funding, it's about what are the trade-offs? And so we could take funding from another program and try to allocate it to fire for this program. But then I think that the recipients of that program will also feel, you know, not very happy about their. not very happy about, about their program or their budget allocation being reduced or redirected.
I'm wondering if there's a way to work with our Department of Economic Development, who has, administers our work, work, Youth at Work program? And how are we kind of working together to make sure that identifying these students that could be eligible for that program could get offset income in some way as, as a stipend or something? I don't know. I mean, I just, I saw Kelly Lobionco here. She's here, but I'm just wondering, are you, are we accessing that right now?
No, I have not, and I think that's an excellent idea, Supervisor. So I'll work with Director Lobionco at DEO to make sure that we explore all ways to make sure that we can remain self-funded. This program's been, been implemented since nineteen thirty-eight. We're on eighty-five years. We only closed it one year during COVID in 2020. And, and what I'd like is to request one more time that we approve this small but necessary increase, and you can direct me to work with our FIRE Foundation to make sure that we can access their money to cover each and every scholarship because I'm not comfortable going back to the CEO and asking for more than that one million dollars that they did provide us with last year. So we are using two-hundred-and-forty-one-million of that this year. We're working on a new sign-up.
Two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand.
Pardon me?
Two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand.
Two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand of the one-million dollars that we got, we're using from the CEO this year. And we're doing a computer program and we're using it for scholarships. I need to do a better job of working with the FIRE Foundation. If there's a gap next year, looking to the FIRE Foundation to fill that gap prior to going back to the families of the people who want to sign up for this program. So thank you for the increase in 2022 of fifty dollars. I, I'm hopeful that we can get the increase in 2023, and I'm going to work with the FIRE Foundation to make sure that we can close that gap for, for scholarships through working with our outside foundation.
So we can, two things, go back to supplemental in October and then also get a report from you on your work with the Department of Economic Development. And third would be to increase, going after more funding from, from your foundation, the FIRE Foundation. And let me just ask, is there a way for people to donate to this fund outside the public? Do you, you know, we have through our.
Well, that would be through the foundation, right?
Is that, is that solely for that? So you can, people can check it off, employees can check that off?
Oh, that's a good idea, employee giving.
Yeah, so we can actually specifically focus on donations for junior lifeguard scholarships through the FIRE Foundation. I think that that is allowed, and I'm going to explore that in addition to working with Director Lobionco at DEO.
Is that one of the things, Fesia, that employees can check off?
You know, I don't know if it's one of the current payroll deduction options, but I certainly think that we should explore it, and it's, I believe that it would meet the, the criteria. That program is administered by DHR. It's probably one of the first things that we should consider because a small amount that is contributed from a hundred thousand employees or fifty thousand employees, that could add up to a lot.
Thank you. And, and you know, I know you've been talking to my staff, Chief, regarding access, so I know you are doing a better job, we're doing a better job of getting this program out to East LA, but I would ask you to think about the San Gabriel Valley, the unincorporated areas of Valinda and West Puente Valley and even into Avocado Heights and Bassett. We have a lot of youth that want to do this, but access, so it's really key. So I know you, you care about that, so I won't go on any further. Thank you, and I am, I will vote for this, but with conditions.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Can I just follow up on that? How, how do you do outreach? Because I know the Antelope Valley is also an area that I would be curious to know how you're doing outreach.
We do it through our aware program, so it's access to water, activity readiness education. So this year we did a junior lifeguard prep pilot program where we went out and reached about seventy-five kids at certain pools throughout the community. We did Greater Whittier. We went out to Jesse Owens and Belvedere Pool out in your district to train them up. So, because the junior lifeguard swim has a standard that they have to meet, so there is those kids that were just below the standard, and we had about eighty-percent success rate of people that did not qualify, and we gave them a little bit of training to reach that level through our aware program.
All right. Do you have a breakdown of where the kids are coming from for the board? I mean, don't put a line in it, but I'd be curious to know where, the breakdown of where the junior lifeguards, not for right now, just to send us, Chief Maroni.
Yes.
I'd be curious to know where the junior lifeguards are, are coming from.
We have that breakdown, and we'll send it to you.
Great, thank you.
Chair, just a follow-up question. We, we sponsor through our discretionary funds, lifeguard program and pool, you know, opportunities this summer for youngsters and families to go to our pools. And one pool that we have been going to for the last nine years that I've been here is Workman, Workman High School, which is part of Hacienda La Puente Unified. Now Los Altos, I think, could be a part of it. But I'm wondering, what are we doing to work with the, with the Y? Because the Y is the group that we're contracting with. And how, that's a ready pool of youngsters there, because I meet them every summer. And are you working with them? If not, I would like, would request that you do that.
We're currently not working with the YMCA, but that is noted, and we'll go out and reach out to the YMCA's out in that area.
We can work with our office on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I also, first time I heard that your department is spending eighty-five thousand dollars on buses, because I do know that each of us have, in our own offices, the ability to pay for buses for different activities. I know I help sponsor some for my seniors. I guess my thing is if, if you didn't get this increase, are there other things that you could look at to close that two-hundred-thousand-dollar gap?
Well, I, I think Supervisor Solis said it well, is work with DEO to explore other opportunities, but also I think I need to look internally to the FIRE Foundation to close whatever gap there might be.
But I mean, last time I brought this up to you, you said, yeah, there were some things in the department. Okay, maybe we didn't buy new something every so often. I mean, you did throw out a few things last time when I was balking at paying for this that you thought you could look to cover.
No, absolutely. If the, if the motion isn't approved today, however, I do hope it is approved.
I know you do. Don't have to say that one more time.
Small but necessary increase. I'm not going to let the program not go forward. I, I was there in 2020 when we had to shut it down due to COVID, and I too received a lot of correspondence from our residents and communities about how important this program is.
I, I guess for me, I mean, I wish we could have, you know, what if we approved twenty-five dollars, right? And maybe I'm okay with that, but then, and, and the other thing, I mean, I, I would admit that I wasn't the, the math expert in high school, but it seems to me the more you raise the fee, the more the scholarships cost and the more the foundation has to raise. For instance, if you're saying two-hundred scholarships this year, two-hundred times six-thirty-five, seems to me that's around one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. So the more you raise it, the more they have to subsidize the scholarship. Seems to me they could just raise it a little more money and cover the two-hundred thousand. And you could keep the fee the same.
It, it's my belief that the people who need the scholarship are, would have difficulty paying the five-eighty-five or the six-thirty-five.
Right, well, five-eighty-five is less scholarship than the six.
Correct.
Eighty-five. That's all I'm saying. The more you raise, the, the more they're going to have to raise to subsidize the scholarships. Seems to me if we could have a meeting in the minds and get to the, the foundation and other opportunities that Supervisor Solis talked about, employees, we could actually probably cover this two-hundred-thousand-dollar gap annually with helping with the buses. I just feel like we didn't try hard enough. I think you have support on this board, it sounds like, but it just didn't feel like you tried hard enough to figure out. And again, I hold fast to the belief that if a parent saw six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars from one of my underserved communities, they're not going to bother to apply because they would not even, they would just say, we can't afford this.
Madam Chair, I just went on, I actually signed myself up for your junior lifeguard, and I'm looking at the financial.
It's Baywatch LA County, right there.
But it, it says there is no guarantee of approval. Funding amount for individual or family applications is based on availability of funds and applies for one summer only, which makes sense, but it's availability of funds, which I did not know. So if we run out of that.
So it's not very inviting.
Well, I, I'm just saying, that, I just want a clarification. There's a pot of money, so when that fund runs out, then financial aid is no longer available, correct? Because that's what it says here. Says there is no guarantee of approval of funding amount for individual or family applications. Financial aid is based on availability of funds and applies.
We have, Supervisor, we have not ever declined the scholarship if they qualified it, just if, if all five thousand people apply for a scholarship, we'd be in a little bit of.
And then for foster youth, they automatically are allowed to, if they check the box that says they're a foster youth, they're automatically, they don't have to do all the verification of income.
Correct.
And so the scholarships are based into fifteen, fifteen, eighty percent, correct? Based on your income?
Yes.
And they have to provide their federal twenty-twenty, or whatever, the tax return in order to verify it?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just didn't know, I thought it was a lot, based on Supervisor Horvath's questions, a lot.
Easier.
Easier. I mean, that's not hard, but there are those that don't want to provide their tax returns, to be quite honest with you, so.
Well, I think the discussion has led us to say it's a great program. Feel like going forward, we should be much more creative. The, the object, I think, listening to all my colleagues, is to make sure that it is accessible to every area of LA County, and particularly for those who come from, you know, underserved communities, who a six-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar fee for a summer program is really high. So I want us to do better, and I think you do too. Sounds like you, you do have the support of, of most of the board, but I, I'm, you know, I don't, I'm not going to vote for it, as you know. I just think it's, it's too high. But everybody makes really good points, and I think everybody is kind of paddling in the same direction on this item. I'm just going to go to the public and hear what they have to say. Are there members, executive officers, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Will Latia Stevenson, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
I know, Eric Previn has been waiting all day to talk about the lifeguard fees. Eric, where are you? You're on my side on this one. Who's in person? Do we have somebody in person? Okay. Oh. Okay, this is on the junior lifeguard program.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, well, my children actually were going to come and speak, and they're signed up as well.
Okay.
Come on over here to this mic, please. Come on, come on. Come on. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Zol Stevenson. I'm ten years old, and I just wanted to speak on our hotel earlier today.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, but this, this is not the time we're talking about.
Whoa.
The hotel. This is a specific public hearing item on the junior lifeguard program.
Understand, so we'll, you want us to come back for a public comment then, I guess?
Yes, yes, thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Nobody on the line.
No other speakers, Madam Chair.
Can you check again for Eric Previn?
No Eric Previn, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item eleven is now before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve this item. Executive officer, please call the roll.
Item eleven is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
No.
Supervisor Han, no. Motion carries three to one.
Okay, let's move on to item twelve. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive officer, please read in the short title for item twelve.
Item twelve is a hearing on project number two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven-two-seven-dash-four to approve the Gateway Planning Area Rezoning Program to complete the proposed land use policy and zone changes in the unincorporated communities of South Whittier Sunshine Acres and West Whittier Los Nietos. A departmental statement was provided and no correspondence was received.
Okay, and we have Dennis Slavin, the chief deputy, and Connie Chung, deputy director, Department of Regional Planning, are both here to answer questions. Any Supervisor, Supervisor Barker, are you still on there?
I was checking my junior lifeguard to see.
I know. Did they accept you?
No, I didn't apply.
This is item twelve?
Yeah. This item is, let's go ahead and hear from the public first, actually, that's what I'm.
Okay. Executive officer, please call members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Will Ayaya Stevenson, Donald Harlan, and Virginia Osorio, please come forward, and staff will assist you.
And Madam Chair, that was from the junior lifeguard, my name up there, so I didn't require, I was like.
Okay.
Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, how about anybody in person on item twelve?
Hi, this is, I'm Donald Harlan. This is about the Gateway Cities rezoning, yeah, or Gateway rezoning. That's, those are my property, that's my zone. Those are, that's my, my real estate. There's no planning commission that owns that. The County of Los Angeles doesn't own that. Sequo doesn't own that, I own that. It doesn't matter what your planning commission plans if they don't own the property. What you guys are doing there is illegal. Your endorsements are here all across there. You can never receive tax revenues for those property taxes if you illegally develop them or endorse regional planning that illegally develops property. You're forbidden from receiving the property tax revenues and the transfer revenues. Unfortunately, that be most of the properties. I don't know if you guys realize, you need to stop that. There's people trying to sell pardons for the President of the United States and staff trying to sell properties.
Okay, your time has expired? Next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is Virginia Osorio, for the record. I'm a property owner that's identified. It's three residential's in the zoning case of R P P L two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-two-zero-one-five. As is stated in the, your addendum, that these are required, that the city, cities requiring for an affordable housing get set aside in housing developments on certain parcels, and it happened to be one of my parcels. Now, I've been doing my homework and trying to get some information on this, and they have, it's a lot to go through. My particular parcel is zoned as an R2, as well as my two neighbors against, with me. Now, it's currently in a R2, but in the general plan, which I can't seem to find, it's labeled as a age housing from zero to eighteen. I'd like to know where that general plan is and if eminent domain.
Okay, thank you.
Is going to transpire.
Thank you. And I'm going to have either somebody from the planning or my planning deputy, Jamie Wilson, to go out and speak with you in the audience.
Yeah, it needs to be a little bit more informative for the general public because it was very difficult to get more information just outside the R2. What is the age, what is, if eminent, they're not using eminent domain, so it's just a big question mark.
Thank you.
If you can respect our residential citizens.
If you'll go, if you'll, if you'll go sit like in the, in the front row there, we'll have someone come talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item twelve is now before us. I'll move, seconded by Supervisor Horvath to approve the item. Executive officer, please call the roll.
Item twelve is before you, Supervisor Solis. Item 12 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, now we'll move on to item 13. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 13 is a hearing on project number PRJ 2021-003368, sub 5, to amend County Code Title 22, Planning and Zoning, to revise the East Pasadena, East San Gabriel Community Standards District boundary and establish the Chapman Woods Community Standards District. A departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Okay, and are there any, Supervisor Barger?
This one I want to speak on. First of all, you know, solving complex problems requires a measured approach that brings stakeholders to the table to find solutions. And I want to thank Amy Bodick and the entire Department of Regional Planning staff for the tremendous work that you did to undertake this effort. And I also want to thank the community leaders, specifically the Chapman Woods Association, for helping to engage the community to be a part of the process. This truly was a collaborative effort to bring in this update to the CSD, to the board for approval. And I know that, I was just in Chapman Woods over the weekend, the community standards just reflect the residents and the community as a whole, to maintain the integrity of what Chapman Woods moving forward should look like. When it comes to land use planning, I believe we have to employ a bottom, bottoms-up approach that builds off the needs of our communities. This ensures that we can address broader goals while also preserving the character of our communities. Chapman Woods is a historic community with architectural styles that mirror its unique history. However, the community has recently seen haphazard development patterns and mansionization that has had significant impacts. The current CSD update takes steps to establish standards that do not constrain private property rights, but also help continue orderly development standards. But I will give one caveat. As we know, the state did implement legislation that takes away local control, and we're seeing that along Rosemead Boulevard, where a church sold a large parcel of land, and the developer is by right going to possibly build a seven-story housing project that is adjacent to all the homes that we're talking about. And so I just want to say the community standards is an important template for the community, but it will not bypass the by rights that the state has implemented, taking away local control and the voice of the residents, specifically in Chapman Woods, and actually all the unincorporated areas, as we move forward, because this is not the only project that I have that does not conform with the community standards of its district. But again, I want to thank the residents of Chapman Woods who brought this forward, and Dennis, as Chief Deputy, I know that you are at the helm today, thank you as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. No, there's supervisors on the queue. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, item 13.
Will Donald Harlan, Heller Hancock, and Susan Ray, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Christopher Romero, you may begin.
Hi, thanks for taking the time to hear me. I am a resident of Chapman Woods community. I've lived there now for seven years, and I think, although I agree with many of what Ms. Barger just said, I disagree with about half of it. I don't, I do not believe the community at large was communicated to properly as it relates to everything that's been written down in what's being proposed here. The community at large is made up of a very wide, diverse group of homes. So the northern part of the community are very small, relatively speaking, lots and homes, where if, when I drive through the neighborhood, there is no mansionization, if you would, in any part of that community. I think what this is trying to do is limit those homeowners that are in the southern part of the community.
Thanks, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, let's go in person, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. First of all, my name's Heller Hancock, I'm a current 30-year resident of Chapman Woods. I'm also the current president of the Chapman Woods Association, and I'd like to very much thank Catherine Barger, as well as SOMAS, for working so closely with our community to draft and hopefully apply these extremely incentivized and guidelines, which are not at all restrictive in terms of what homeowners can and cannot do with their property. I've lived there for 30 years, and I know for the last eight years, myself and members of this community have been working toward this. So I very much urge adoption of these standards, and again, very much appreciate Supervisor Barger's assistance with this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. We really appreciate all that you've done to preserve this community. We have architectural design, Wallace Neff, we have Coates Homes, I mean, Buff Enhancement, there are many beautiful homes in this neighborhood we'd like to preserve. We thank you for this extensive work, both by the supervisor, SOMAS, so many people put into to protect the community. We're not trying to prevent homeowners from doing what they want to their homes, we've incentivized them, as a matter of fact. Those who have not read this, this has been an ongoing project from the community for over eight years. We proposed originally a historical, which was a little restrictive, but what we have now is in compliance with what anyone wants to add on to their home or do. It's incentivizing people to do so, to keep the integrity of the neighborhood, and thank you again, we hope that this passes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything else you would like to say, Supervisor Barger?
No, I just want to thank you all for coming down, and to the caller that called in, you know, again, getting involved with the association, which is very, very active in the Chapman Woods area. I would recommend that, because this has been a bottom-up approach as it relates to bringing people in to contribute to the CSD. And again, thank you to regional planning as well.
Okay, it would be appropriate, then, to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 13 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barger, seconded by Supervisor Solis to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
For item 13, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we're going to move now to item 14. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item for the Lake Los Angeles Community Standards District. Item 14, Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 14 is a hearing on project number 2019-003977, sub 5, to amend County Code Title 22, Planning and Zoning, to establish the Lake Los Angeles Community Standards District. A departmental statement was provided and no correspondence was received.
Okay, Supervisor Barger?
I'll make this short. I want to thank Connie Chung and Mark Herwick for their, and the entire team for working diligently on our community standards through this process. We have no less than eight different CSD updates that the department is undertaking in the Antelope Valley alone. And this one has been long awaited. I want to thank the Lake Los Angeles Town Council for their leadership on the development of the CSD, along with all the Antelope Valley communities, which are unique. Each and every one of the CSDs is going to be coming forward, is unique to the areas we're talking about up in the Antelope Valley, and many of them rural. So again, to you and your staff, thank you, and that is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Executive Officer, please call members of the public that have signed up to speak on this item, item 14, the Lake Los Angeles Community Standards District.
Will Dennis McDonald, Donald Harlan, Gary Middleton, Latia Stevenson, and Zoe Stevenson, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Tim Rice, you may begin.
Hello, thank you. My concern is that I was not duly notified. I've talked to many, many people who also were not duly notified. Many who would like to participate today, but because of work and lack of notice, are not able to participate today. And so I would like this matter tabled and brought up at a later date for these people that were overlooked to participate.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant comes to the line of Peter Arvizu, please go ahead. I have to apologize, that participant has removed themselves from queue. We'll go to Shalandrick Stallworth, you may begin. Shalandrick Stallworth, you may begin. No response, we'll go to the line of Ron Althoff, you may begin.
Yeah, this is Ron Althoff. I, I've heard about this last night for the first time. I'm not totally aware of what it's representing. I would like to get it tabletopd until I can figure that out. I appreciate it.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant comes to the line of Diane Churney, you may begin.
Yes, I was never notified of any of the town council meetings by mail, public sign, newspaper, or flyers. And I would like this tabled so that more of my friends and neighbors can participate on these issues that will affect their lives personally.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, let's go in person.
Hello, thank you Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to speak. I'm very concerned about the area surrounding Lake Las Vegas. There have been no improvements done. The lighting is not appropriate, it's hard for us to see. People litter on streets as they do typically, but there's been no attempt to clean up. In addition to that, there are so many improvements that need to be done to our streets. I know that we have property taxes that are supposed to pay for things like that. And the problem with the area is that stores are built in the area, but there are, it's hard to navigate, to go east from my home to these stores is about a 30 or 40-minute trek. The roads are not passable, it's very difficult for me to drive. And I suppose that's all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Mark Evans. I was, I received this letter in the mail, case number R P P L 2019-002636-5. And I was really concerned about, trying to find out really what was going on, and, you know, how would this affect my property at the end of this meeting? Basically, that's what I really wanted, and I'm an heir to the property, you know.
Madam Chair, I'll have Aneesh from my staff will come out and talk to you.
Okay.
Right here.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker, please.
Dennis McDonald. The proposed standards that I read are not consistent with the buildings that are already in that area. I mean, it's primarily 70s tract housing, substantially 70s tract housing. I'm sorry. Anyway, I don't think that the standards are consistent with the community in the area. There are a lot of empty lots, or lots that people are putting mobile housing on, and it just doesn't seem consistent with what is in the area already. I guess that's all I really need to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, this is about Lake Los Angeles planning and the community plan. A lot of these plans, they look really good, they're real nice ideas. I really like that, that's good to have some standards, but I noticed that there's a lot of illegal real estate developments going on right now, even out there. I've been out there and I was looking around, and there's a lot of apartment buildings going up, billions of dollars out there in the middle of nowhere. There's crazy guys out there doing power games or something, trying to build the most or make their own town. There's some real bad people out there. You know, most of Palmdale and that part of the desert does belong to me as registered as my properties. I'm not trying to run people out really like it's a bunch of abandoned desert areas, and I'm glad somebody locks it up and cleans it and stuff, really I am. And I understand that situation, but they shouldn't be building more.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
There's a lot of room out there.
No more speakers?
No more speakers, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I ask David or Dennis to respond? How did we do community outreach, and how was this notified to the public?
Thank you Supervisor for the question, and I'm going to ask Connie to explain the outreach that occurred for this particular plan.
Thank you Supervisor for the question. So we did work with primarily the town council and several online workshops over the years. We also participated where we could in community events, such as Parks After Dark. And my understanding is, we did have a mailing list with approximately 10,000 addresses, and it is always unfortunate when we hear from community members who say that they were not informed, and it just tells us we need to try harder, but this was our best attempt to make sure that everyone was informed.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm a little disappointed that the town council, no one, members called in in support, because this was driven by the town council based on community. And I know it's been very controversial as it relates to some of the challenges out there with storing containers, RVs and all that, but my understanding is that the notices did go out, and that this has been eight years in the making, correct?
It's been a long time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that outreach with the town council, neighborhood councils. I like it that you went to the parks, but I will say, sometimes the sterile, I use that with great affection, postcard or letter that comes with a, you know, 2-777-5 parcel, for a lot of people who, you're right, and I would love if everyone were a member of their, their, their town councils, but a lot of people aren't. And to get something like that is a little unnerving, and there's, maybe it's a good opportunity for the planning department to kind of look at what we give to the mass mailing, and maybe make it a little more user-friendly, with a little more understanding. I know I've gotten those at my house, and I'm like, whoa, what is this? But you, I think you do a good job as much as you can, but like for the 10,000 mailing, I do know a lot of people get those and really can't figure out what we're talking about.
But Madam Chair, this has been literally, when I first got elected, this was one of the first things that I went out and discussed, because there were issues regarding large containers on property and the controversy, and then you've got truck drivers who wanted to be able to, to use storage there. I mean, it's been a long time in the making, and it's not going to please everybody, but it clearly has been percolating in the community for at least eight years. Correct, Connie?
Yes.
No, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm planning to support this, absolutely. I'm just wondering if it, we could look at some of the things, the mass mailings that we, we do to notify people.
Put flowers and things on the outside.
Well, you know, I could help work on it. All right, any other members of the public? Seeing none, no other supervisors? It would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 14 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barger, seconded by, I'll, I'll second it to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 14 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we're down to item 15, and then we have one more, 16 after that, and then general public comment. So item 15. So item 15 is a hearing on the project for the Pear Blossom Community Standards District. Members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 15 is a hearing on project number 2019-003978, sub 5 to amend county code Title 22, Planning and Zoning to Establish the Pear Blossom Community Standards District. A departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Any?
I just wanted, on this one, the Pear Blossom Town Council for their participation and support. And I'm hoping, I mean, Connie, you know, you worked on this one as well, I believe, didn't you? Yeah, this one has been equally as long in the making. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's call members of the public that have signed up to speak on this item. Executive Officer?
Will Ayah Stevenson, Cecilia Munoz, Christopher Minsal, Donald Harlan, Latia Stevenson, and Zoe Stevenson, please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, let's go in person. Welcome.
Hi, Supervisors, how you doing? Whoop whoop, Fifth District, Pear Blossom in the House. I just wanted to throw my support. My name is Christopher Minsal. I am the rural town council president of Pear Blossom. We are loud and proud. We have a very distinct, unique community and this CSD reflects it. Connie, I am super thankful for your team and Mark and with the very hard work and collaborative efforts on this. When we formed this committee, it was not the town council effort, but an actual town committee was formed. And, excuse me, I must say, we had a very well diverse set of opinions. And for the first time, arts and culture, your department that you guys helped build, helped implement some of these updates to accommodate our rural culture and some of our artisans that we have in our town. The only thing we were unable to accomplish was saving our Joshua trees directly. The state's guidelines are not going to be enough, so we hope for your support in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Donald Harlan. This is about the Pear Blossom illegal real estate development plan. I really like the community plans. I was scared that there's some kind of community plan. But like I said, there's lots of illegal real estate development, even out in Pear Blossom. Sequoit doesn't own these properties. County of Los Angeles doesn't own these properties. Nobody should be issuing building permits if they don't own the property. There's a big problem with lawlessness out there. There's the big bad sheriffs out there. You shouldn't be giving them loopholes where they can get people's property or doing too much. There's a big problem. I noticed some people are trying to sell real estate illegally, trying to gain pardons from the President of the United States. I see these properties are going for $2 million a pardon. I've been pointing them out, you know, that's really too bad that people are trying to pull stuff like that. And I think Antelope Valley's, what's going on out there, that development's a good example of it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Cecilia Munoz. Gracias por tomar en cuenta la comunidad de Pear Blossom. Tengo dos años haber comprado una propiedad ahí. Mi sugerencia para mí sería que permitieran las bardas de seis pies, que es lo legal, para seguridad. Pues hay muchas personas que van a tirar mucha basura por los terrenos.
My name is Cecilia Munoz. Thank you for taking into consideration the community of Pear Blossom. Two years ago, I bought a property there. My suggestion is that you permit the six-foot. Because of security.
Pues muchas personas van a tirar basura al desierto.
Because a lot of people, a lot of people throw trash.
La comunidad que es las propiedades de las personas.
They do that on the properties of the people.
Para mejorar el lugar y más seguridad sería permitir acceso más flexible para poder fincar.
To be able to improve the security of the people, of the properties rather, there needs to be more accessibility in terms of farms.
Permitir contenedores para guardar las cosas.
And containers need to be permitted to be able to store things.
En las propiedades de un acre.
On one acre properties.
Y este también me gustaría que la, el City Hall permitiera los permisos más, más menor costo para poder llegar a construir.
I'd also like for City Hall to be able to permit lower-cost permits to be able to construct.
Thank you.
Gracias. Gracias.
Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So first of all, thank you for coming down and Pear Blossom, Pear Blossom proud. I love that.
Loud and proud.
Loud and proud. And as it relates to the fencing, I mean, the issue, we discussed it at the board about illegal dumping, not only in the Antelope Valley, it's happening in all of our districts, is problematic. And it's something that we continue to struggle with as it relates to the impact at least having on the environment up in the Antelope Valley, but also just in all the downtown areas. And so I hear you loud and clear as it relates to the impact.
Thank you Supervisor Barker. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing at this time and vote on the item. Item 15 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Solis to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
For item 15, Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, now we're on 16. Another hearing for the Southeast Antelope Valley Community Standards District. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then now to comment on this item, item 16. An executive officer, please read in the short title.
Item 16 is a hearing on project number 2019-003974, sub 5 to amend county code Title 22, Planning and Zoning to amend the Southeast Antelope Valley Community Standards District. A departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
Yep, on this one, thank you, Madam Chair. On this one, I want to thank the Sun Village and Little Rock Town Councils. And that area is so rich with history, especially Sun Village. And I am excited to get this CSD moving. Again, these have kind of been languishing and not from lack of work on your part, just getting them moving forward with staff and all. So I want to again thank Public Regional Planning for the work that you've done on this, but also the town councils for both Sun Village and Little Rock, two very different and distinct communities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on item 16.
Will Ayah Stevenson, Donald Harlan, Latia Stevenson, Latia Stevenson, and Zoe Stevenson, please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, let's go in person.
Hi, this is about the Southeast Antelope Valley, same comments as the other one. It's good to have plans, but I don't know if you guys have any idea, who is making deals out there for that illegal real estate development? Is there a county supervisor that's making deals out there with people advancing to higher political positions for political leverage? I noticed that there's a lot of foreign agents out there in the desert and that you guys might be getting some kind of leverage or favor, or maybe somebody's holding hostages for you guys out there in the desert.
Okay, make sure you stick on to the community standards.
The community standards, yeah, that they're getting a lot of favors for that stuff, that illegal real estate development in Southeast Antelope Valley. That's a real shame that you guys are just playing along with it. And I know there needs to be community standards and rules even out there, but what they have out there is way out of control.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Who's Amy Bodak? Who's Amy Bodak?
She's our Director of Regional Planning.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 16 is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Horvath to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 16 is before you, Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, now we're going to hear from members of the public wishing to address this board on general public comment. Members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item, general public comment. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak.
Will Alejandra Gonzalez, Anna Estrada, Ayah Stevenson, David Armstrong, Destiny Rosales, Donald Harlan, Gary Milton, Jose Martinez, Latia Stevenson, Lord Dariempo, Mark Evans, Michelle Bernatelli, Pakis Gonofi, Pedro Baraz, Ramiro Bravo, Rosa Miranda, Zoe Stevenson, please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Thank you. Our first participant is Mario Garcia. Please state the item numbers you're addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Sorry about that. I am addressing the general public comment. Good morning, I'm a resident of Pear Blossom and speaking today in support of local protections for the Western Joshua Tree. As you may know, California has drafted the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act as a budget trailer bill. Although the state bill offers a baseline of protection, Los Angeles County can do better and residents in Pear Blossom and other rural communities in the Antelope Valley want to have a voice in drafting a local program. I asked the board to allow communities to have a space and a voice at the table in drafting the local program for the Western Joshua Trees. The CSD communities you voted on today have just worked with the planning department and there is a good synergy among these communities and the county. Lastly, there is an urgency to act as the state bill may be enacted by the end of June. No doubt a local program will take time to come together and draft, so if the state bill allows for it, I ask that the board consider enacting interim protection similar to what is now in effect by the CDFW listing. This would keep the Joshua Trees better protected until an equitable, comprehensive local program specific to Los Angeles County is enacted. Thank you for your time and also for your approval of the CSD today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Hello, my name is Destiny Rosales. I'm so sorry. I stand here before you today because I have an open DCFS case out of Torrance District Two since March 2021. I was in a very hard place in my life, not making the best decisions, getting into an altercation and shoplifting, not thinking how it would affect the life I have with my kids. Sorry. Since then, I've gone to school for medical assisting, graduated, currently working and have been working as a client aide as well in a reentry program. I'm here today because I'm concerned and I'm scared to lose my kids. I've reached out to the department and have not consisted visits with my kids throughout these two years. My last walk-through was on the first of March and I have yet to wait for a set schedule to see my kids. Every time I reach out, it makes me look like I'm doing too much for my kids or being too present.
Okay, your time is up. Would you like to speak to somebody this morning from the department?
Yes.
Do we have somebody from, okay, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Ana Estrada, soy vendedora ambulante y líder de la Compton y 73 Street.
Good morning, my name is Ana Estrada and I'm a street vendor and I'm a leader of Compton and 73rd Street.
Quiero hacer comentarios sobre el punto nueve y quiero dar gracias a la junta por moverlo a junio 13.
I would like to make a comment about number nine and I want to thank the board for moving it to June 13.
Quiero expresar mi preocupación y de otros compañeros por los caros que son los costos de las tasas. Para algunos sería más o menos el 50% o un poquito más del ingreso en un año.
I would like to express my concern and that of other of my coworkers with regards to the expensive fees. For some of it, it would be 50% of our income in a year.
Tenemos personas de la tercera edad vendiendo, es único ingreso económico. También quiero expresarles que las tasas están en inglés y me gustaría que las pusieran en otros idiomas como el español, por ejemplo.
We have elderly who are selling and that is their only source of income. And I also would like to ask, since these fees are in English, we ask that it would be in other languages.
Es difícil entender cómo se aplican las tasas propuestas a todos los vendedores. Sería bueno facilitar la compresión de las mismas.
It's difficult to understand how these fees apply equally to all vendors. It would be a good idea to be able to facilitate the compensation of the same.
Tenemos vendedores que, por ejemplo, venden tamales y en el día nomás venden una, dos, docenas, tres champurrados, dos avenas. Si les sumamos sería un costo de 44 dólares al día. ¿Cómo podrían pagar estos gastos de los fees para los permisos?
Thank you.
So we have some vendors who might sell two dozen tamales, three champurrados, and $44 a day. How would they be able to pay these fees?
Thank you. Gracias, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, County Board Supervisor members, and my name is Paces Goffney. I was here many, many years ago and came here to offer our services from my program called Econ Opportunities. We are a reform program that has a construction department where we came and we established with you guys that we would get contracts and we, from the at-risk community, the 10% and you guys agreed a long time ago to pay 50% of those contracts as long as I could bond them. At the time, I didn't have $60 million worth of bond and I'm back now and I do. And I'd like to work with someone from your guys' board so we can get started, so I can start hiring people in the Los Angeles County areas, then create jobs and housing for these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, can we have him maybe speak to someone from the O E or Consumer Business?
Is there someone that he can speak with? Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Sí, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Alejandra Gonzalez. Soy miembro del colectivo Poder Comunitario. Soy una vendedora ambulante.
Yes, good morning. My name is Alejandra Gonzalez. I am a member of the collective community power group and I am a street vendor. I sell food.
Primeramente, les doy las gracias por darnos el tiempo de cambio al 13 de junio, el punto nueve.
First of all, I would like to thank you for giving us time and changing it to June 13 for point nine.
Estoy aquí para dar mi comentario público porque estoy muy preocupada por los altos costos de los permisos que nos están otorgando.
I'm here to give my public comment. I'm very worried about the high costs of the permits that have us worried.
Son costos que no están a nuestro alcance. Yo soy vendedora solamente fines de semana, como hay muchos compañeros que solamente así lo hacen.
These are costs that are not within our reach. I just sell on weekends and many of my coworkers do the same.
Son más del 60% para un vendedor. Yo solo, como les decía, vendía solamente los fines de semana y no me imagino cómo vaya a afectarme en mis gastos.
So it's more than 60% of the cost for a seller? And as I was saying, since I only sell on the weekends, I can't imagine how this would affect me as a vendor.
Soy esta persona que solventa los gastos de mi casa. Pago mis billes, mi renta, hago mis taxes y aún así siento que no me va a alcanzar.
I'm a person who takes care of my household. I pay my bills, I pay my taxes. And in spite of all that, I don't know how all of this is going to affect me.
Thank you. Thank you. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My daughter is Aya Stevenson, next, and you intentionally put me in the back.
Okay, what's going on?
She's intentionally dilated, and she's intentionally trying to make me laugh. She told her people not to help me before, and I don't appreciate that.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
She intentionally put me in the back and said, "You came down last." My children were...
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Her name is Aya Stevenson, she's on next.
Okay, can you let her speak next after these, okay.
All of these people with translators and...
Okay, after this one, you can speak. Okay, all right, go ahead. Next speaker.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Michelle Bertinelli. I'm representing Inclusive Action for the City today. For those not acquainted, Inclusive Action is a nonprofit community development financial institution. In fact, we're one of the few CDFIs who cater, in California, who cater to these micro entrepreneurs. With that privilege, we've been able to take a deeper dive into the financial landscape and need amongst our street vendors. As it stands, item nine is set to adopt the maximum fine structure allowed under SB 972. Aside from the lack of facilitation and support needed for renewing a permit or license, we are concerned that even vendors that are exempt from getting a health permit will still be subjected to these permit charges under the proposed item. I would like to thank the board for addressing the important issue of street vending, health permits, and related costs. I want to especially thank Supervisor Solis for delaying this item to June 13th. We ask to set up following-up meetings with appropriate offices and departments before June 13th. Thank you so much.
Okay, next speaker, and then you're going to let, okay, great, go ahead.
Buenos dias, junta directiva.
Good morning, Department of Directors.
Mi nombre Ramiro Bravo.
My name is Ramiro Bravo.
Soy vendedora ambulante de comida en la ciudad de Walnut Park.
I'm a street vendor. I sell food in the city of Walnut Park.
Y quiero agradecer a esta junta directiva por permitirme la oportunidad de expresar mi punto de vista.
I'd like to thank the Board of Directors for giving me this opportunity to express my point of view.
Acerca del punto nueve del orden del día de hoy.
About point nine on today's agenda.
De la manera más atenta quiero solicitar a esta junta directiva, hagan una revisión acerca de las tarifas de salubridad, dado que los precios que, el costo que se maneja, atentan con las finanzas de la mayoría de los vendedores ambulantes.
I would like to attentively ask the Board of Directors to please take into account the health ordinances in light of the fact that it very much affects the cost of the majority of street vendors.
Muchos de los vendedores ambulantes somos negocios de subsistencia que no alcanzamos ni siquiera ingresos de 25 mil dólares anuales, y pagar 10 mil dólares por un permiso es el 50% o más del 50% de nuestros ingresos anuales.
Many, many of street vendors are subsistence businesses. We do not even meet an income of 50, rather, $25,000 a year, and having a fee of $10,000 would not be reachable. It would be more than 50% of the income for the most, the majority of us.
En la realidad eso es insostenible para nosotros.
In reality, this is unsustainable for us.
Gracias y buenas tardes.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
I'm Latia Stevenson. I am being housed in a safe housing program with District Five, but the program has put us in absolutely deplorable conditions, and the hotel has one bed with my children, five children. I'm in my third set of multiples that are, my due date is June 1st. Again, like I was saying, I'm already four centimeters dilated, and I have to keep on coming in to address the board about these reprehensible conditions that they have placed us in with myself and my children. And the experience that I've had with Kathy before, when I came in the last time, I had a violation of my HIPAA rights by her telling the people that was working with her to not help me because she had assisted me prior, but she shouldn't have said that because that's a violation of my personal rights to talk about what they may or may not have done, which they haven't. We're still in the same situation at the same hotel, and they came in with a busload full of people that looked like they were on drugs. This just happened, I got all of this on record and on video. These people have not been vetted out. There was a whole bunch of transvestites in front of my children.
Thank you. Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, miembros de esta mesa. Mi nombre es Rosa Miranda, soy organizadora con Colectivo Poder Comunitario.
Good morning to the members of this board. My name is Rosa Miranda, and I am an organizer with the organization Colectivo Poder Comunitario.
Les vengo a hacer un llamado a ustedes, ya que yo fui parte del programa piloto la primera fase, y es preocupante que muchos de los vendedores no van a poder pagar los costos de los permisos de la cera y el costo de salubridad.
I'm making a call to each one of you, since I was part of the pilot program during the first phase, and it's very concerning that the majority of the vendors are not going to be able to meet the costs of these permits with regards to health and the health ordinances.
Me gustaría que ustedes puedan adoptar el programa de Chicago.
I'd like you guys to adopt the program of Chicago.
El costo es de 100 dólares por dos años.
The cost is $100 for two years.
Y las personas de la tercera edad pagan 50 dólares.
And elderly people pay 50 dollars.
Y el Departamento de Salubridad trabaja con los vendedores ambulantes para poder entender, ya que son los expertos en su trabajo.
And the Health Department works together with the street vendors to be able to understand, since they are the experts in their work.
Y a esto le agregamos el costo de lo que quieren multar, va a ser inalcanzable, y un trabajo que realmente puede, en algún momento, puede dejar de existir.
And then when you add the cost of, when you add the cost of fines, this is going to be a job that would cease to exist.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Aya Stevenson, and today when we were leaving to come here, it was a bus full of people. They had dogs and skateboards and hockey sticks and bikes, and one guy, he was wearing panty shorts with a wig, and it was another guy, and he was screaming, oh yeah, and hanging off his shorts, and it was another guy who was screaming and stuff, and they were like hurrying out and rushing. They had plenty more furnitures in the room.
Okay, one speaker at a time, one speaker at a time. You've already had your time.
No, she doesn't know that you're...
Well, you've already had your one minute, and you're allowing your children to speak, so they each get a minute, but you can't, we can only have one speaker at a time. Because, okay, go ahead.
And one, and the lady, the guy that had the booty panty shorts, she was pushing something like a big tube or something.
Okay, thank you for speaking. Now, now, we have, do you have another speaker? Do you have another speaker? Okay, next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Zoe Stevenson. I'm 10 years old, and I wanted to speak on the topic of the place. So they was, they was up all night, and yesterday, because they didn't do it for us, they did it for the host people, because yesterday they was working on the houses, and they was taking carpets and stuff, and today, it was this lady, she was crazy, crazy, and she had a collar on her neck like a dog, and she had a wig and stuff on, and so it was a whole giant bus full of...
A bus full of them.
Okay, one speaker at a time, one speaker at a time.
Yeah, it was, and some guy had no underwears on, and he had it on his head, and he bent, never mind, and, yeah, stuff, and it was just a whole bus full of junk and stuff.
One speaker at a time, please.
Yeah, thanks mommy. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please. Go ahead, go ahead.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Pedro Barías. Gracias a la mesa directiva de supervisores.
Okay, you're, this is a warning, ma'am, you are disrupting the meeting, so that's your first warning. Next speaker, please.
Okay, gracias por estar acá, a la mesa directiva de supervisores. Este, venimos a pedir el día de hoy que esté pues por el punto número nueve.
Please hold, please hold this gentleman's time.
Ma'am.
Go ahead, city attorney.
Ma'am.
County council.
Ma'am, you need to keep your voice down, you're being disruptive. We need to listen to the speaker.
No, we listened to you, now we need to listen to the next speaker. That's your second warning, one more, and we're going to ask you to leave. Okay, thank you. All right, keep your voice down as you leave. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Mi nombre es Pedro Barías.
My name is Pedro Barías.
Estamos aquí por el punto número nueve.
And we are here for point number nine.
Este, queremos expresar nuestra preocupación.
We want to express our concern.
Por los permisos de salubridad.
Due to the health permits.
Bueno, sabemos de que movieron el punto para el 13 de junio, gracias por eso.
We do know that they moved the point to the 13th of June, thank you for that.
Pero estaremos al pendiente de sus votaciones.
But we will be keeping tabs on your votes.
Bueno, aquí la preocupación es de que los costos de permisos de salubridad están muy altos.
So the concern here is that the costs for these health permits are very high.
Y pues venimos a pedirles a ustedes por favor que si ustedes pueden llegar a un acuerdo con el Departamento de Salud.
So we come asking that you would please come to an agreement with the Health Department.
Para que puedan bajar esos precios accesibles que pues, hay muchas familias de bajos recursos que no alcanzan a pagar tan altos costos.
So that you can lower these prices, that they can be accessible. There are a lot of low-income families that are not able to pay these.
Y que también puedan traducirlos al idioma que más entienda, que sería pues, a cualquier idioma si preferido pues al español.
And also if you could translate them to the preferred languages, to each language that would be applicable, and preferably to Spanish.
Y que los costos sean entendibles también para que todo vendedor pueda entenderlos.
And that the costs would be understandable as well, so that every vendor would be able to understand them.
Soy parte de la campaña de vendedores ambulantes de Los Ángeles.
And part of the campaign of street vendors of Los Angeles.
Y en voz de todos los vendedores ambulantes y más, de preferencia los de comida, pues le damos las gracias a ustedes.
Thank you. And as the voice, as the voice of all street vendors, especially those who sell food, we thank each one of you.
Thank you, gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland, general comment. I'd like to mention, I didn't get a chance to speak about the items number seven and eight, that definitely, those are no, seven and eight, definitely denied, no. That's the gas pipeline franchise for the, supposedly you guys are working for the Southern California Gas Company. Where's Holly Mitchell? Where in the fuck is Holly Mitchell? Why is she giving Matrix Pipeline Franchise agreements for my oil, my wells, my property? All my oil wells are shut off. All my oil goes to the Arctic to a defensible position to keep it out of your guys' hands until they fix this energy problem and oil crisis that you guys created. When the whole world and the whole United States has to ask, what the fuck's wrong with the oil and the gas supply and the energy supply? I'm going to come back and say, each one of you county supervisors trying to give a franchise...
Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is, my name is David Armstrong, and I've been having a tremendous, tremendous stalking problem with a police officer. This is Horace Burdright, and he's been sending his, he's been sending his puppies out, you know, to harass me. I've been trying to, trying to keep it as a low profile because this is a high-profile case, and this officer is black, and he's in a high position, and I just, I need some, someone I can talk to. This is in San Bernardino, I know I'm in the wrong place, but this is, this officer is in San Bernardino County, and I need someone...
Did you just say San Bernardino County?
Yes, this is San Bernardino, this is San Bernardino County. I know I'm in the wrong place.
Right.
Yes, but I want, if I go down there, I know I'd be put in jail, the next thing you know, I'd be dead. And so that's the reason why I need an advocate, so I can talk to the chief of police in San Bernardino, please.
Okay, is there someone here who could at least speak to this gentleman and see whether or not we can, right, so there's some people back there that we're going to at least begin to talk to, see if we might be helpful. Okay, next speaker, no, no more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, that concludes our time for public comment, and so that concludes today's meeting. The next special closed session meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, at 1:00 PM, and the next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 9:30 AM. Thank you, and good night.